Welcome, everyone. We're glad to be here today. I'd like to thank the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we've got some appointments here, and if we could have Chris Gamache from the Hampshire Trails Division. Chris, do you mind coming up?
Sure.
I've been transferred to DOT.
All right.
Oh, really?
Sorry about that. I'm on camera.
That was a mistake.
Well, thanks for seeing me for a few minutes tonight. Just wanted to give you an update on where we were on the proposed expansion of the Amunucic Recreation Trail beyond its terminus over by I-93 heading up toward Wing Road into Bethlehem. We've gotten some general cost estimates from the Department of Transportation. We met here in this room, actually, just over two years ago, getting input on extending that trail with all the existing uses, continuing north with pretty much full support here at that time. So DOT has worked through a couple of issues with us. One, it is considered an active railroad, even though nothing's rolled on it for quite some time. It was or is under lease to the Central New Hampshire Railroad, and Jeff Rees was here that night as well. So he has agreed to give up his lease up to the Wing Road, and DOT is starting the paperwork now for the formal abandonment process through the Federal Rail Authority. My initial cost estimates from DOT, they were drafting a letter to send to the town outlining the cost and the expectation that the town of Littleton would bear all of the costs for this. I asked DOT to send the letter to me instead, where it will still be a state asset, and we're kind of moving that charge forward, so I don't think you would have received the letter very well if it had come to you. But early estimates are it's about a $13,000 permit cost just for the Federal Rail filings and abandonment process for this stretch. It's about double what we initially had been told and estimated. But they have been working on that. The new rail administrator, Shelley Winters, is drafting up those permits now. So we hope to have that done over the winter. Once that's done, and over the winter, we'll also be working with your Recreation Department and Commission here in town. We've asked the Recreation Commission if they'd be willing to submit for a federal grant through the recreational trails program that we administer, and we would use those funds next year to actually pull the rail and start developing the trail surface and steel. Our estimate is it's about $30,000 to lift the rail and separate it just on that four-and-a-half-mile, five-mile stretch. DOT keeps the steel, and they usually look to either salvage it and then buy higher-rated steel to improve other state-owned lines, or if it's 85 pound and above, they can reuse it today. So one thing we'll have to work through are ties. There's about 2,200 to 2,300 ties per mile on a railroad, so we're talking in the neighborhood of 10,000 railroad ties. Colebrook to West Stewartstown, Keenan, Vermont, we pulled up a year and a half ago. That was in the neighborhood of 25,000 ties. What we've done is offered them, basically, to people to come take for landscaping, garden improvements, or other projects, so actually they're disappearing fairly quickly, and saves us a lot of time and money. So that'll be some of our plan here, some we can reuse on other projects. Couple, two of the issues that we're working through is two of the lead champions on keeping this moving forward. One was certainly Councilor Burton, who we've lost, and the other one was Mark Sanborn at the Department of Transportation. He was the one here two years ago at the meeting for DOT. He has left DOT and gone to Concord Trailways, so it's kind of us pushing it through with DOT, but they're continuing to move forward, but it's really more on us right now. So other than the extension of the Amunucic with the existing uses, we're also trying to get additional help from the bike community. This stretch of trail is being looked at as a regional bicycle connector from Jericho Town Forest, is that where it was? In the eastern, right?
Yep.
Over to Moose Brook State Park in Gorham. So trying to tie it in and target more tourism, not only from the motorized side of things that we predominantly work with, but from the mountain bike side, making multiple-day mountain bike trips, with Littleton as a stage area as well. So our hope is that July of next year, we will start lifting steel and start the development and have that at least roughed-in surface by late next fall.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Thank you.
Sure. My pleasure.
Okay. Next, that would be Tony Alakwa.
Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight representing Littleton Main Street Incorporated. A couple of years ago, you might recall, during the construction phase of Main Street, we had a parking program that was very successful during the holiday season, so I've been speaking with the chief, and we'd like to ask you folks permission to reinstate that program. It's very basic. It would run from Friday, November 29th to January, Friday the 10th. The concept behind that would be that we would have printed out holiday passes thanking those folks for utilizing and spending money downtown, spending locally, and the parking enforcement officer would have the ability to, will have the slips at their disposal. If the meter runs out, slide that slip in there, let them know that they get an extended 30 minutes from the town for Littleton Main Street Incorporated, the merchants here in town. After that 30 minutes, at that point, you know, they get one free pass. So we're in, working in production right now, got those cards printed with your blessing.
Let me make the motion. Okay. Second motion. All those in favor? Say aye. Okay. Your pleasure.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you. Any questions?
TJ, just a quick.
Yes, go ahead.
November 29th through January 10th?
That's correct. Is that where they give the people the ability to come back, to exchange anything? Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure we had those dates correct.
Yeah, and we're good standing with the chief, so we're all set there too.
Okay. You're very much.
Y'all have a good night, thank you.
Okay. Next, George and Mitch. This is not a vaudeville routine, I hope.
Well, we hadn't bothered that way.
Well, I knew you were involved, so I kind of thought that, you know.
We've come to talk a little bit about the community house and the future of the community house. It's been real apparent to the town, we've just recently had the roof repaired and a little bit of the structure repaired, and we're moving on. I believe Brian Ward's been in and spoke with you a little bit about some of the, he was, had been made aware of some of the financial needs. We're looking, as we move into our 100th year, to make sure that the community center is in as good a shape as it was when it was acquired by the community center organization 100 years ago. We do have some structural needs, we have some electrical needs, some aesthetic needs, and in the future, we'd like to come to the town and be able to work with the town in order to be able to attain some of the funds to do this, as well as, we want to make sure that in this century, that we're meeting the needs of the town. The house was really purchased by the organization through the town to, as a memorial, to World War I veterans. Well, we don't have many of those around anymore. That's the vaudeville side. So what we want to do is, we want to make sure that we're meeting the current needs of the people in town, as well as making sure that we stay current with the trends that Littleton has. I'm going to let Mitch speak a little bit on, he's more aware of preservation and renovation than I am.
Well, some of you that do know me, I'm the owner of Littleton Millwork. Our company specializes in historic preservation. I have a very good connection with the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, and as this building has began to deteriorate more and more over the years with very little maintenance, I felt that it was time to become more involved in order to save what I consider to be one of the jewels of Littleton. So the first thing that we attacked was the roof, because if we weren't able to protect the roof, we had a lot of water damage, we're losing the third floor, roof ceilings, the plaster is collapsing, so we figured the best thing to do is to put as much effort into the roof as we can. We have issues in the annex, which is one of our next big issues, as most people realize that we have a structural issue out there from water drainage over the years that have caused the floors to deteriorate. In order to get that building back up and in use, it's going to require a substantial amount of work. There are a lot of other issues throughout the buildings that need to be addressed, from the wiring to the painting to the vinyl siding that is actually trapping water into the building that needs to be addressed. So we're trying to, you know, make a study right now of the next issues that we need to be following, but we really need the town or anyone else that would like to lend a hand and help us to support this building.
Okay, are you going to be submitting a article for the board?
I'm not sure how that's going to go. We're still in discussion on that. We do have a, and I'm trying to remember what that was that I...
It was a multi-year appropriation that Brian Ward was in talking about, that through one action, say the next town meeting, it would fund multiple years appropriations. So that was one avenue that George had mentioned to me.
And we're, we're not sure that we're at the point where we're ready to go that route this, this coming year. Future, yes, we probably would.
What's the status of the community annex as far as kind of stabilizing right now in its nonuse?
We've stabilized it the best that we could. We haven't had it winterized yet. We should have it winterized within the week, but we're having, we're looking at how we can keep it from deteriorating any further, and we've got a few plans that are sort of on the table.
So is the water damage ongoing?
It, and that's what's happened. It has continued to go on. We've made some effort to add some ventilation to the floor, and we were somewhat successful, but it wasn't complete success. We still had more deterioration over the course of the last three years, to the point where it was deteriorated so bad, we didn't feel that we should maintain it, that we should, we should maintain occupancy of it. We needed to abandon the occupancy.
That's a hard question, separate from preservation. With, with the issues that you had brought out there, would the cost of rehabilitation exceed the cost of renewal?
You could never rebuild that building. So no.
Boy, you could rebuild, I mean...
But not for the cost that it would take to restore it.
The, let me go back to it. The request you're making is to be part of the town budget process, like the library or the...
Well, we're already part of the town budget process as far as there is an amount of money that comes every year. This would probably go beyond that, to the point where we'd be asking the town to sort of partner with us over the course of a few years, but that, that's down the road a little. And one of the reasons I wanted to come is I know that Brian had spoke with the select board about that recently, and we just wanted to continue. Also, we, you know, we're sort of hoping that we can elicit some town help as we go along, not just in the, the structural needs and the cost, but also in making some plans as we push into the future. That, that's almost equally as important as the structure, is to make sure that we're taking this in a direction that the town wants it to go in. You know, we, we like to think that we sort of enhance the, the life of Littleton, you know, sort of what it means to live in Littleton, and want to make sure that we're taking care of that.
I think what you're probably going to need to do is to come up with a sketch over the next few years, how it's actually going to be evolved, so that we know what it is we're, when and if we decide to get into that, okay?
We're already working on that currently, and the roof was, again, was our first one, because without that, we couldn't go anywhere. But we are working on that currently by taking it as a priority per item to have an overall view of where the expense and the process is going to go.
Have the board discussed Brian's suggestion that one of us become a liaison to, to the board? Because we haven't had an opportunity to talk among ourselves regarding working more close, one of us working more closely with the board on an ongoing basis, but have you, as a board, have you discussed that?
We haven't discussed that at this point, because we're just really starting to get into this, and we, you know, we certainly would be thrilled to have any or all of the input that we can get from the board, as well as other members of the town and the larger community in the North Country.
Any questions? Dan?
Am I right in assuming that the annex, is that building out there?
Right.
What, what can that building do, other than be an old building, that would pay for itself? How can it be used that would pay for itself, pay for these, whatever has to be done to it?
Well, I think that's really what we're looking for, the community's help for, is to find out what the community would like to see these buildings being used for in the future.
Just as a one member of the community, I think things should pay for themselves, that the taxpayer, it shouldn't be a burden on the taxpayer, even though it's an old building. I mean, it's an old building, it's an old building, that's great, but if it's an old building and it pays for itself, that's, that's fantastic.
And maybe along, along the lines of planning this kind of, you know, sketch that you're going to be doing, is you might want to also look into how it is that they could generate income as well.
That's part of our plan as well, as we go along, as we're developing our plans for the future, is, you know, we, we would like to make this completely sustain, self-sustainable in the course of years. It traditionally never has been. If it could be, that would be a great, you know, a relief on the resources of the town, and, but we just, we need a little help in our, in our planning, and we'd hope that select board and town members helping us would produce that outcome.
Eddie?
How much does the town contribute towards that community house now?
$35,000.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So now we have, we're still on the lineup here, right? Citizens Concerns be next. We have Citizens Concerns. Are there any concerned citizens? Okay, sounds good. Town managers report.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll start out by a couple of announcements. The draft audit is available. I think you received copies of that, so if you have time to look at that and back to any comments, that would be helpful.
I have a couple of questions, but I think what the, the issue that was raised by the auditors appeared last year as well.
Which issue is that now?
The Gatsby, the, let me get to it. I thought we were coming up here.
Okay.
As regards to the retirement system...
45.
Yeah, there it is, okay. This has to do with Note 20, and let me just read what they say here, and I think this was in last year, but that's my question. "As discussed in Note 20 to the financial statements, management has not recorded the long-term cost of retirement, health care costs, and obligations for other post-employment benefits in governmental activities. Accounting principles generally accepted in the United States require that those costs be recorded, which would increase the liabilities, net position, and expenses of the governmental activities. The amount by which this departure would affect the liabilities, net position, and expenses on the governmental activities is not readily determinable, so they render an adverse opinion. In our opinion, because of the significance of the matter described in the basis for adverse opinion on governmental activities, the financial statements referred to above do not presently fairly, do not present fairly the financial position of the government, while financial statements of the town as of December 31st, 2012." And then, you know, then the note itself, the Note 20 goes into a long discussion of this. So is this why we are bringing in a consultant to work with us on this?
That's part of the reason. We have complied with doing the report, but setting aside funding for the, what they consider the liability has not been done, and there is some discussion on how much that liability is, because the town does not pay retirement benefits for its retirees. We process the health insurance premium, and the retirees pay 100% of it. So there is discussion that some of the liability has to do with if the retiree had to be on a Cobra-type plan, and we had to cover them for a certain number of period, 90 days, and if they didn't make payment, the town would be liable for that. And we've been back and forth on that argument. They also want us to calculate out futuristic on how many people might retire, what the amount of that retirement should be at that time, how much the town would be responsible for to pay these employees or these employee benefits. The only benefit being is having the retiree on the group health insurance.
How far back does this go here?
Gatsby 45 has been about five years. There was three years that there was no approach on it through management, at that time through the town manager. We didn't have the funds to be able to do the study that needed to be done. We've got the study done. It's required every two years. We produce the study, give it to the auditors. I am not aware that it's actually required that we put that funding aside, the money is aside.
Well, the issue they have is that it's not showing, so the question regarding, you know, the overall value here.
I'm saying that it's around $8,000.
Okay, so it's not a wide margin of money.
Not for the current retirees. I'm not looking at the future retirees. There's a whole calculation for that. But for the current retirees, I'm thinking $8,000 would cover a 90-day period if they did not have the subsidy through the New Hampshire Retirement System and were not paying for their premium.
This wording appeared last year in the audit too, isn't it? And so it goes back a few years.
Mm-hmm.
So now we're addressing it?
We're attempting to, although we have not booked that as a liability.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to bring to the board's attention, the planning board is contemplating a livestock, care-raising and keeping of livestock ordinance. They've had one public hearing, they will be having another public hearing, Jan, I mean, December 3rd, I think, at 6:00 PM. And this is really to try and address the nuisance issue that has come up on several occasions regarding small lots and harbor of livestock. So if you weren't aware of that, I wanted you to be aware of that, if the public has any input that should go to that December 3rd.
You thought we were already...
That farm. The DPW garage requests for qualifications were due last Friday. We received six, we received seven responses. Six were responsive to our RFQ request. One was more of a letter suggesting how we should approach it. The DPW committee meeting is tomorrow at 4:30, at which time we'll be looking at those RFQs and deciding what we should take for our next step. Interestingly enough, I think the bottom line is, the six proposals were pretty much consistent in that they said you really should be budgeting $100 a square foot. So for a 12,000 square foot facility, that's $1.2 million. So if we were to look at town meeting appropriation, that would be in the ballpark of what we would need to budget. I don't know if Brian Hadlock is left, but the Mount Eustace Timbercut, Mount Eustace Ski Group and Wreckin' Parks Commission want to authorize a timber cut up there for two reasons. One is to try and recover some of the more valuable timber, and also to create improved ski trails up there. Dick Blanger is organizing the timber cut on behalf of the town. He estimates there should be around $4,000 or $5,000 coming back to the town. I went and researched how it was last done in 1997, I guess was when the Eaton property was cut, and the select board delegated the authority to contract for that to the Wreckin' Park Commissioners. I don't know if that's something you want to do again, or whether... I am. I think it's fine. What I would then suggest is that, my guess is that the park commissioners wish to retain that $4,000 or $5,000 in revenue, and that would then require a warrant article to do that, as it did in 1997. So if you wanted to make a motion to authorize the selectmen to enter into that contract on behalf of the town, I think that would be helpful, and then we can deal with a warrant article as part of the future warrant discussion.
Marty has some questions about that, I might point way back, I believe. Do you know what her sense about this is? Regarding allowing them to cut the timber?
Well, I think it was, it was more a concern of, were they going to be going in to remove timber as the primary objective, or open up the trails? And really, it will, it'll have three goals. Those two, plus there is a $6,000 grant that the Trails Committee, Snowmobile Club, was granted to relocate that snowmobile trail. So they would, while they're in cutting the timber, they would also bring an excavator in to realign that snowmobile trap.
Motion?
So I'd make the motion to delegate the responsibility for the cutting of, whatever we call it.
Timber cuts, yeah.
Timber cut, to the Wreckin' Park.
Second then? Oh, we, we have a hand up here.
My question has nothing to do with your motion as far as the funds, so I'll wait to talk to you guys.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Chief?
Just to the town manager, do you know if they've already surveyed that, and if so, if they've marked a boundary?
My understanding is they have flagged it.
You know what color flagging?
I don't know.
I just saw some recent flagging out there, and just, as in a butter, it just carried so.
I think that's what that's for, is the timber cut. So now I guess we move on to the draft warrant articles. Um, in your package was a, a list that I put together, uh, a very preliminary draft for this year's warrant articles, but I thought it would be worth it to, um, have Karen put in a little context of what we did last year and, uh, try to mirror as much as possible what, what the procedure would be that we, we entered into last year.
Have you got a copy of that?
Yeah.
So Karen, have you got some handouts for that? If that, oh, maybe I just, middle page.
Oh, Karen's also done a, uh, a finance director's report too, so.
Which do you want to start?
Kind of like conversant for the board.
Do you want to go over the finances?
Let's do the finances report first.
Uh, this is as of today, and, uh, I calculated out, we should be at eighty-nine point five percent using weeks. And, uh, revenue calculations were coming up about ninety-four percent. So we're a little ahead on our revenues. Um, and that shows some improvement over last month. So we're getting, of course, we've got in most of our sewer tax that's gone out and it's come back in, so we've reflected that in these numbers. Under the expenses, um, under operating expenses, we're at an average of eighty-two point one, and most of those departments are under the eighty-nine point five, so they're running fairly well. Um, as I say, there's a lag between getting some of the revenues in and having it posted into the accounting system. There's also a lag expense-wise, because you normally, it takes ten days to get the bill and maybe another ten days to process the bill. So you'll see a little lag there. Um, everything will catch up as it comes closer to the end of the year. Under, uh, parks and library, we're at eighty-five point six percent. Under debt service, that's ninety-six point one percent, which is because we refinanced a lot of those loans and everything's been paid out now, other than the tan that we recently took. Enterprise funds, which is the Opera House, special detail parking meters and the sewer, we're eighty-seven point eight percent. So, uh, in the very end, it's eighty-five point one is where we're at overall. So, and still in pretty good shape and all the departments seem to be doing very well at monitoring their expenses.
Yeah. I follow the overtime really specifically, and, um, this is at forty-six weeks, which is eighty-eight percent of the year. And the amount spent against the budgeted amount is eighty-nine percent. So we're right on the button. Well, police and fire are, are well below there. They're at eighty percent of their, um, budget. Um, highway departments hit a hundred and two percent, they're a little bit older. And, um...
And that is some of the weather.
Yeah, transfer stations.
The next page is two thousand thirteen warrant articles, and this page gives you the list of the warrant articles we had. The amount of the warrant articles, I've noted the ones that failed on here. I show the amount paid out, the amount to be paid out, and this is expected. I, I can't commit that it's all going to be paid out. And then what we look at as a balance left, and I know Milt, at one time you approached me about what I felt we would have left for warrant articles, and I didn't really see a lot of money there left over. So I'm looking at maybe five thousand, um, dollars from one particular warrant article, but other than that, I'm not seeing a lot.
Good, thank you.
And it depends on what we have for projects that are nearing the year-end that we haven't received bills on. And then I included the encumbrances that were approved by you last December, um, and what we had paid out on these, what we encumbered, what we paid out, uh, what we expect to be paid out. And, um, just a note on a couple of them, that the Dells Road culvert replacement may need to be re-appropriated, or I'm going to look into how the auditors want me to handle this, because this is the second year into it, and normally they don't like to see it encumbered a, a third year unless it's a non-lapsing warrant article.
The explanation there is that we're waiting for the pro-formers and the, uh, to be approved by National B.E.S. This is to replace that culvert, but we really need their approval, so we know what to size the culvert to. That's, that's why it is not going to be expended.
So in, in the end, uh, if you took out the appropriation for the Dells Road, you'd probably end up with about fifty thousand that will end up following fund balance after the end of this year. Okay?
So then the, the list you have, uh, the, the small list is a, as I titled it, very preliminary draft, subject to change, but, um, we will be going to the, uh, Budget Committee the first Tuesday of December. Um, and this is on their, their schedule for us to review. As much for the project's titles as it is for the money, I think we're, we still need to work out the money. And if you remember last year, we had a fair elaborate spreadsheet where you had the appropriations and then any, um, self-funding, uh, programs, and if we were going to take anything out of fund balance or a loan or any other kind of debt. So it, it did work its way down through the impact of the tax rate, um, but we're still, uh, listing the items and, uh, figuring out the anticipated costs. Um, the first one we talked about was the DPW garage bond, um, and then, of course, we have the proposed budget, and then the APSME collective bargaining agreement, that's still being worked on. Uh, and then we generally have a special, uh, town meeting for the bargaining agreement that fails. And then we, I list, uh, a number of reconstruction, repaving, uh, town roads, uh, and some of these, the more expensive ones, uh, actually do have some sewer work associated with them. Um, so I'm still working with the DPW supervisor on that. Um, but some are carried forward from last year that were cut out and some are some new.
Which ones were carried over?
Uh, the Seer Road was carried forward, uh, the old Whitefield Road was carried forward, um, and Carlton Street, I believe, are the three that were carried forward.
Just the, just the costs that you have listed here, um, almost five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, sure.
And that's infrastructure, so those are really important to us, but...
And then the police department, uh, lease purchase of, of two police cruisers. Um, the chief is here to explain how that might work, if, if you'd like to engage in that conversation. And then the, uh, special detail account would be to cover the cost of the cruiser setup and a new I.D. machine. And then we had talked about the police department, the fourth year of the cost grant that you approved, but, uh, upon further review, I think you'll see a note there that says not required. So that would be, uh, something we can, uh, discuss further if you want. While the, the agreement is that we will employ that, um, officer for the fourth year, uh, it's, it's not required that we do it as a full-time or if there's a one appropriation, they, they can't require us to do that. But if that's something forward-thinking that you didn't want to encumber a future warrant, that's something we could consider.
And we already have a, an officer who would perhaps fill that role in the fourth year, correct, in my understanding of that.
Uh, highway department, heavy-duty truck with plow and wing. And then Cottage Street sidewalk reconstruction. Uh, we looked at Cottage Street, we're just repaving Cottage Street this year, uh, and that was discussed last year. Uh, but when we started looking a little more closely, it really needs a complete reconstruction. I mean, I think it would be throwing good money after bad, but if that's all that, you know, the town wants to, wants to do, that's, that's fine. But I felt it important that we, we come forward with a, a, a complete rebuild. We put a lot of money into our sidewalks and recently, and I think it's paid off well. It's a relatively high-use sidewalk. Um, and the number you see there is my calculation. We actually had an engineering firm in town last week, um, that is going to refine that number, so, um, I'll have a, a new number on that. Uh, Dells Dam, here again, that's a placeholder that, uh, we're, we're, uh, carrying in case, uh, there's a recommendation at any time for this town meeting. Um, the transfer station revenue fund to offset taxes, well, it doesn't look like there's going to be, uh, much revenue there to offset taxes, other than the, the next one, which is the purchase of bags and building and equipment improvements. Uh, townwide reassessment trust fund, so that'll be year four of five years, uh, to, to do the reassessment in two thousand fifteen. And the next one is the, uh, unexpended, uh, local welfare, uh, trust fund, so that me, essentially is any money that's left in that account at the end of the year will be carried forward. Uh, the number in there is probably not representative of what we'll have, I think it'll be something half, or about half of that number. Uh, and then number fifteen is, or sixteen is, is a new one, uh, emergency operations plan training exercise. Uh, that would be seven thousand dollars that would be reimbursed by, uh, a grant, um, to engage in a town-wide emergency operations plan training, um, simulation. Uh, I believe the, uh, fire chief has already set a date for that. The next one would be, uh, to expand the weekend coverage at the firehouse. And the fire department is looking to, uh, purchase a thermal imaging camera, replace the overhead lighting system, uh, install an alarm system, uh, remove their underground tank, uh, that is, is caused some problems. And then, uh, a new one that we also talked about was, uh, perhaps providing the call companies some limited, uh, coverage for, uh, accidental, uh, dismemberment and death, and possibly to cover them if they are injured on the job and, uh, lose their primary job income. And so this would be insurance to, uh, pay for a period of time when they, uh, were out of work due to their, um, being injured on the job, working for the town. Last year, we looked at the Opera House meeting room, uh, got some, uh, refinement on that, and we talked about that at the last meeting, about thirty-five thousand. And then the River District, uh, Saranac, uh, Mill Street, River District, uh, planning land and infrastructure funding, um, looking at about fifty thousand is a number that they've been talking about. And then down below are petition warrant articles that, um, we aren't really, uh, we haven't received yet, or I guess we have received some, uh, but it just gives you an idea as to what those are. Uh, Wreckin' Parks has mentioned that they may have as many as three, uh, coming in, and then, uh, the Chamber, the Community Center, uh, Golden Cemetery while repairs, and then the social services agencies. So that's a preliminary list, if, uh, you have any others or want to weigh in on that?
I have a comment, and I wanted to make it to the select board members, Margie's not here. And I wanted us to just spend a moment here on, on, that's, that's up here. I went back and looked at our tax rates for the past three years. Um, in two thousand eleven, uh, our tax rate was twenty dollars and forty cents. In two thousand twelve, it went to twenty-one oh seven, which is a three-point-three percent increase. In two thousand thirteen, our tax bill went to twenty-two forty-six, which is a six-point-six percent increase. We're ten percent over two thousand eleven, and I think, I don't have a question about anything that's on this list of warrant articles, and of course, there'll be more coming in on petition as well. But we're entering into, uh, we're entering into a situation where we're running some risk here. Um, and there is no, no blame being pointed to anyone. The school lost about three million dollars from the state. Uh, we're losing our school population, so the money goes down as the school population goes down. No one's at fault here, but, um, I did an extrapolation for next year, just using those two years of increase, and we'd be, if that held, we'd be at twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. The three of us, I guess, have to talk when Margie gets back and, and see where we want to go here. We're starting, and I, and down below, I've got the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which hasn't moved at all in two years. Now, the, the index really isn't relevant for an operation like ours in some respects, except that boards have a tendency to point to it when it's going up a lot and they're trying to justify their budgets. But the, but the National Consumer Price Index is at two thirty-three point five in two thousand eleven, and it's at two thirty-three point nine right now. So it's moved hardly at all, and so we can't say it's inflation, although I know that operations like ours have inflationary rates attached to it. So it's just that CPI is always referred to and, and you're increasing your budget and the CPI backs it. In this case, it's not backing up. But I, I guess my concern is that are we beginning to move into a situation where we're going to have some reaction on it as well? And this list, again, I don't have any, I spent some time on this. In fact, I've driven some of the roads, um, that are listed on here for, um, replacement or for repaving, and, um, there's nothing wrong with any of this. It's, it's just that we have a, we have a concern, uh, we don't know how, if, uh, if percentages, anyway, I just wanted you to know that.
Okay, so, um, Karen and I will be, uh, meeting with the Budget Committee, uh, December third, and, uh, boil this list, so if there's any other, uh, items you want to discuss with that, please, please get back to me.
And, let's see, okay. And you have more?
Nope, I think that's it.
That's it?
Yes.
All right. Uh, let's see, old business.
Before you go away from that, could we, could you entertain some questions or statements?
Uh, we should have Karen come back up here.
Well, to Milt, I wanted to mention that, uh, he said that the CPI isn't showing a lot of inflation, but, uh, because, we have to get into politics here, because the Fed is printing so much money, uh, we do have inflation in that our money is now worth less, so we do have that to have, to figure in. I don't know if there are actual figures for it, but that's...
I think it's, uh, your dollar has inflated by about forty percent the last five years, and that's because of quantitative easing.
Yeah.
AKA...
Okay. Um, you, you mentioned that, um, we'd have to rebuild Cottage Street. Now, we just, we just paved it. When you say rebuild it, what are we talking about?
Just the sidewalk.
Just sidewalks?
Sidewalk, yeah.
Um, and you said that the P.D. needs and, or, or, not that it needs, but something about a new I.D. machine? What, uh, what are we I.D.ing?
Chief?
Our I.D.s. We can't use laminated I.D.s.
Oh, okay, it's not, it's not to I.D. people, it's just...
It could be, Dan.
That I didn't want to hear.
It's just I.D., our I.D. car. Actually, it'll be for all the town employees.
Okay, gotcha.
No drones involved, right?
Yeah.
Oh, on the raising livestock ordinance thing, I, I hate rules and regulations. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure...
We weren't able to figure that out.
I'm not sure what we're talking, in town here, somebody who's raising chickens or something, or, you know, how far out are you going? And, um, uh, I often wonder if this isn't something people could just, um, do on their own. If my neighbor's got something and the smell's coming over to me, I go over and talk to them. If I can't get, uh, satisfaction, then I'll take them to court, you know? Uh, I, I just, the, the rules and regulations, just, uh, I, I hate them.
Where's that meeting going to be held?
It'll be right here, uh, next Tuesday. It'll be right here, next Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
So you'll be here, right?
Tuesday, 6:00 PM, they're gonna have about this?
Yeah, the Planning Board will be having their second public hearing.
Okay. Next Tuesday, 6:00 PM?
Yeah, you'll be here anyway for the Budget Committee, Dan.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you'll seamlessly transition right into that meeting.
And-
Bring along someone.
That's, that's all the notes that I had, thank you.
Any other questions? Eddie?
Long as you want to talk about that amendment, has to do with the zoning. Livestock, it seems that the regulations that we have now are not really enforceable the way it's written regarding livestock. However, this particular ordinance, I think is extremely complicated, and, and it's, personally, I don't like it, I vote against it, but I, I think it's too much. And, and there's so much regulations in that, it has to do with details on how many feet you gotta be from your property line, and you gotta have two acres before you can do anything, and, I mean, it's, talking about communism. I just think it's an awful restrictive thing.
What, Fred, what sort of compliance have you received?
Well, primarily with poultry, people raising chicken hens for eggs, and, on small lots, in, small in-town lots. But there have also been some horses and pigs that have resulted in some plates.
The pigs are a major issue. A Roma, yeah.
Well, it's quite restrictive. I mean, you look right there, that first, the second, oh, playground, except for the above, regulations above, a little room walk over down, you've got six, six chickens you're gonna have, no roosters, you shouldn't have six, maximum of six chickens anywhere at home. A little way, it sounds to me-
I have six chickens in my freezer. Rudy?
I just read, you know, something about that in the paper, right, you know? And what they were suggesting is that for every acre that you are laying, you allow it to have a one lifetime. It's like a chicken or whatever, you know what I mean? I personally think, you know, this is, of course, you know, it's a court on court thing, that this is a joke. It's a joke, these people, they got nothing to do it just to, to, not to amend the, you know, address the issue, that doesn't even belong to, to society. If you have a property, you want to have a chicken, why you gotta pay taxes and that for what reason? That's what they want to do. It's too wrong. I suggest, you know, that the, the board, you know, really, just to cancel this statement.
We don't have anything to do with that.
It's the Planning Board.
I know, but you guys, you can talk with the Planning-
No, that Planning Board is, is separate from us.
Who enforces, who enforces this?
That would be the zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Let's move our law here, and, okay. Under old business, Budget Committee appointment. So what are we staying with that?
Cecil, you advertised?
Irene, Muffin, Copen Neighbors, the other person who's in a broader interest.
And she has been attending some of the meetings, yes?
So, motion?
Yeah.
I move to appoint Mrs. Copen Neighbors to the Budget Committee. What's the term here for, is this a full three years or?
It's to fill Stan's fill-ins.
So it's only this last year?
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay, so to fill Mr. Philians?
The balance of, it's the fill-ins term, yeah.
Okay, I second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The Pemmy Baker Solid Waste District Appointment.
What I ask of the board to do there is appoint Brian as a replacement for Jackie.
Brian, oh, the, the new head of the-
Yes.
Transfer Station, okay, very good. How do you spell his last name?
How do you spell his last name?
P A T N O E.
Pat, no, P A T N O E, correct.
Okay, all right. Do we have any motion? So, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Energy Conservation Committee Appointment.
And Bill Latulip wishes to be added to the Energy Conservation Commission Committee, and I don't believe there's any restrictions on the size of that, so.
There's a motion, so, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, under new business, approval of safety policy. And, ooh, it's like they cut down a tree to make this.
I have some questions. You make the motion to, and then, I make a motion that we approve this.
I'll both have any questions, first, and then we'll make a motion.
Okay, okay. I have a series of questions. I'm talking to you as, as a fire safety officer. And I just don't know what, you know, what the answer is. How many, the people that are listed here are the people who are on the committee?
Correct.
Do you keep minutes?
Yes.
Do you put the people who are present as part of the minutes?
Yes.
What percentage of attendance do you have based on the number of people listed here?
Usually about 70%.
Does it drop a little bit?
Yes. There's been times it's been 50%. And a lot of times, that has to do with emergencies. We have people called out during the middle of the meeting, in fact.
The meetings are once a month or once a quarter, or?
We've been trying to do every two months. We were doing quarterly, but it was sometimes hard, things would be conflicting, and we were supposed to do quarterly meetings, so we've now changed to every other month.
Karen, tell me about the authority that the committee has.
The authority is very limited, and it's according to the RSA's. And we basically discuss claims that have been processed. They have, a lot of the information is left out, name, address, to try to limit the, or keep the privacy of the person under HIPAA laws. We look at different claims to see if there was anything that could be done to try to avoid that claim, or avoid future claims, or is there something that could be done so that, you know, a policy or procedure put in place so this wouldn't happen again? We look at the cost, look at the cost by department, so that we're aware of what departments have the higher percentage of the claims and of the cost. We try to send notes or memos, or a letter even, we've done that in the past, to things that we've been made aware of. Our goal is to try to support the department in working safely. We have seen some other entities, agencies, that we've worked with not work safely, and we've also addressed that through letters.
The letters are recommendations, not necessarily directives.
Right. We can't make directives.
So this is the product of the Joint Loss Management Committee?
This is a product of the Joint Loss Management Committee and the Workers' Comp Timex. They were involved heavily. I can tell you, I've been on the Joint Loss Management Committee, I would say I came on about 2005. We started working on this statement of safety policy and safe operations program and general safety procedures back in 2007. I know that other people had worked on one in the past that never got fully through all the process. This went through several different stages that went to the departments. It was reviewed several times by the departments in 2008. In 2009, it was brought to the selectmen, it was postponed, there was concern, it was gonna cost us money to implement it. And finally, it came down to, we had to start somewhere in getting some policies and procedures and some programs out there, especially for those departments that didn't have a standard operating procedure. So this covers many different departments, it's not just one. You know, working, clearing trees might be for the parks, as well as the highway department, as well as the fire department. So the departments that didn't have a SOP, Safe Operating Procedure, this has come into play. It also refers to the state rules regarding safety in this. And 2011, the selectmen finally signed out, signed up on this.
I have, the judge is suggesting that we not move on this yet. I have a couple of recommendations, and basically, they come from the years that we've talked with our attorneys when I was working at the point company, as well as our insurance carriers. If you can, I would make the attendance by the committee members mandatory, and, you know, they would need to check with the chairman if they couldn't make it. Your minutes are discoverable in court, and so if you have a committee that doesn't have high attendance, it just makes the employer look bad. There's no requirement otherwise, but to perhaps do that. You have a, a statement in here under number six. "The employees are educated to know and follow all safety rules, take no unnecessary chances, use all safety guards and equipment, and to make safety an integral part of your lives." It then says, "Employees will be encouraged to report unsafe working conditions." I would recommend that you change that. "Employees are obligated to report unsafe working conditions without fear of retaliation." And then I would add a sentence. "Retaliation against an employee for reporting a safety violation will result in disciplinary action, including the possibility of suspension or termination." The stronger, the stronger you can make the rules, that the employees are obligated, you know, to follow, the better it is, because people see things every day that managers don't necessarily see, and retaliation is always a concern, just in general, so. I think overall, these read very well. I just, I wanted to make a statement about the committee and the attendance, because that's, that can be an issue, and then maybe strengthening that one sense. So as it stands now, I, I'm okay with it as it is.
You want to wait till it's been-
You want to have a committee meeting and talk about that?
Then we'll do it.
We, we weren't planning on having another committee meeting until January, but I'm sure we could call one.
Or either that, or if you, if you don't need to have this done tonight, in terms of approval, then you can bring it back to us.
Just a small question.
Go ahead, Dan.
I'm guessing that this is having to do with public employees. Does it also affect a company that the city hires to do something? The reason I'm asking is, I watched the people doing the sewer manhole up on, was it Pleasant? And, and something, I saw them doing something that just turned me cold, how dangerous it was, and I just wondered if this covered that also.
It doesn't, Marty, it doesn't cover another subcontractor working on behalf of the town. They have to carry their own-
Yeah, insurance, yeah.
Any other questions? Can I bring that back?
The investment policy, what's up next? Can you read here?
The only change to this, and this is something that has to be reviewed on a yearly basis, is the date. Investments have been slow this year, and we have, are required to keep it within safe-
Paul? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
We have to keep it within the rules of the-
You do act like a bookie, you know that.
I have a question. The first sentence, "Responding to the requirements of RSA 419, the Board of Selectmen hereby enacts." We do this every year.
You have to.
Yeah, right, so why don't we say hereby renew's the town of Littleton's investment policy?
Can do that.
Can we do that? And then I have a question about the treasurer. I, I don't have, I do have one question about why we have to use Massachusetts banks, but that's maybe old language. Does the treasurer actually invest money places?
Yes, they can.
No, but do they?
She has, in the past. She's moved money from our, we have some investment accounts separated out that can go into T-bills, they have to be-
So it's not part of the trustee of the trust funds?
No, this is like our, our checking account. And then our sewer funds, they each can be invested in different places. It's not anything to do with trustee money.
Right, okay. That was my, that was my basic question. So she moves things into short-term notes of various kinds. I do have a question asking why we have to use Massachusetts banks or New Hampshire banks, National Banks, and not, why couldn't we use Vermont National Bank?
I'm not sure I'd have to ask.
It reads like, or, well, it says here, "National banks operating in New Hampshire or Massachusetts."
I would have to ask.
To me, it sounds like just old language.
Yeah, I think it's old language from the RSA's, maybe.
I don't have anything against Massachusetts, I'm just wondering.
John, since you're-
We're, we're 10 miles away from another state. "The treasurer on an annual basis shall obtain a statement of condition from each bank where the treasurer deposits or invests funds." Does she do that?
She gets a copy of, or she gets the reconciliation and all of the bank statements, and can see all of the interests that we're earning, and some are even broke down by the other basis.
So this policy actually is the lending document. Because it was so cold this weekend, I spent all weekend reading this stuff.
So you're gonna be doing some more reading this week, too, it's gonna be pretty cold.
Okay. So do you want to have us approve this now, or can you make some wording changes?
I can make that.
I mean, the enacts versus renews, I think renews reflects more than the enacts, is what we're doing, but, okay, so we'll bring this one back as well.
Okay.
All right, approval of energy conservation policy.
I have a recommended change here.
Okay.
For all of those, all those of you who are older and retired, I want to make the following statement, I want to read this. "The role of the supervisor, this is energy efficiency within the office complex of the town of Littleton, shall try to replace old retired equipment with more energy-efficient models." Now, for those of us who are old and retired, you may not want to be replaced if in fact you're still functioning. So after 23 years of working with Mr. Hennessy, I never really come forward with old equipment to replace unless there was something wrong with it. So, "Shall replace equipment with more energy-efficient models when appropriate," or words to that effect. Old, retired doesn't necessarily-
Almost there. I can have a different opinion of that.
Oh, yeah, well, that's fine.
We'll, we'll bring that side.
We'll bring this back. Otherwise, okay, I had some questions about wording, but it wasn't, it wasn't-
Okay. We all set with that?
Yeah.
All right. Special state primary election for the Office of Executive Counsel.
Can I, excuse me?
Sure.
Chairman, I think the Energy Conservation Committee wishes for the board to formally adopt this policy. It may be that you should defer it until someone from that committee is able to attend the meeting, but I think this was originally developed back in 2011, at least that's the date I have, and, and it's my understanding that they, they feel as though the lack of formal acceptance by the selectmen is some lack of concurrence with the policy objectives here.
Okay, we can move on.
So why don't I, why don't we bring all three of those policies back?
Okay, yeah, oh, that's fine, I, I thought we needed to pass it, I'm just not sure the wording of that one there is.
Dan?
Milt, your, your complaint was that it almost sounded like just anything old and everything, just toss it out, rather than waiting for it to, to-
Yeah.
Kick the bucket. The machine.
Well, old and retired doesn't mean it's malfunction.
Right.
And so it, whenever the equipment isn't working anymore, then replace- And so whenever the equipment isn't working any longer, then replace it, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, you know, if you go down to the, down to, was it Clinton Street, the White Farm, and you will find that State Surplus opened three days a week. They push stuff out as soon as money comes in, and the oldest stuff just goes out, and it's perfectly serviceable.
Perfectly good.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So we don't want to do that, is what I'm saying. All right. You all set for it?
On that item? Yeah, and then move on to the elect...
Okay. So we're going to have to do something in January, so.
That's, that is correct. There'll be a primary Tuesday, January 21st. Or it may be the, the final electoral if it's not a contested election. So candidates have, through November 25th, which is today, and, or beginning today, and through December 2nd, to file with the Secretary of State. They don't file locally, you file with the Secretary of State, recognizing they'll be closed Thursday and Friday of this week. That will then put in motion the, the primary and regular election. If there are, is contested Republican and Democratic seats, then there'll be a primary with the regular election on town meeting day, March 11th. If they're non-contested, then the Tuesday, January 1st date, my understanding, will be the, will be the final election.
Plenty of candidates out there right now, so.
There's a few on both sides.
Yeah.
Fred, what are the following offices that...
It's just the Executive Council. This is a special election to fill Councilor Burton's seat.
Okay.
Let's see, other business, approval of minutes. I wasn't here for the number 12 of the year, so. No, it was 7th, maybe, I guess it was.
I've read all the minutes, so have I. So then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 16th.
Sorry, I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that we, I make, we make, I approve that we approve the minutes of October 28th.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 7th.
Now, that's the one I missed.
So you want to hold that?
My understanding is that if you've read the minutes, then you can approve them.
That's the approach of this? Okay, I'll make a motion.
I saw a motion to approve the minutes of November 7th.
Second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 12th, 2015.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. All right. And let's see, we have to go into non-public, correct?
I would, we do, please.
All right. And we will now go...
What's the, what's the reason?
Uh, it's...